Yeah, good morning. Welcome to our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners session. It is Wednesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and nineteenth, actually Valentine's Eve. And as always, we are going to start, well, we're here in the Senator hearing room at five-five-five Court Street Northeast. And as always, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, almost perfection this morning, Commissioner.
Close.
Yeah, close. We have nobody signed up for public comment this morning, so we'll go right into our consent calendar. I believe it's your time. Sorry to have a long one.
So Chair Cameron, yes, there's a shortlist today. Nicely done for all involved. I make a motion for approval, the first items under Public Works, we schedule a hearing, a public hearing on February twenty-seventh, two oh, twenty nineteen, to consider appeal of partition, P case eighteen oh-one-one O'Brien. That's the only item.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right. First action item is under Informational Technology, consider approval of a purchase order agreement with Presidio for four hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-one cents, purchase of, purchase off, the Interlocal Purchasing System Cooperative Contracting for Consulting Services to Implement and Configure Equipment Maintenance Support for the county's network infrastructure. Scott, good morning.
Good morning, and for the record, I'm Scott Emery, the Director for Information Technology, and with me to present this particular package is-
Ken Pearson, IT Operations Manager. So, this morning, we'd like to have you consider the approval of a purchase order agreement for, with Presidio LLC in support of the Marion County Enterprise Network Redesign Capital Project. Marion County Information Technology Department has initiated a multi-year effort to redesign the county network infrastructure to meet current and future business needs. This fiscal year, the project was funded at one point five million, and this request is a third and final amount for the current fiscal year of four hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-one cents. The following, the contract is focused on the technical consulting services to complete the work on the following key areas. The replacement of air bridges, these are air links that help service areas that have no data available to them, so some of our remote sites, there are nine pairs in that setup. We're implementing and configuring of rack-mounted network equipment, upgrading wiring in network closets to handle the new equipment, and implementing the campus firewalls to help provide additional layers of security where sensitive data is held. The supplier again is Presidio, and is contracted through a TIPS program called the, the Interlocal Purchased Systems, and it's a standard governmental agreement. We're pleased to assist you with any questions you may have at this point.
What's a Palo Alto, I mean, we're not in Palo Alto campus, right?
Palo Alto is a firewall.
Okay.
Yeah. It's technology.
Because I was thinking that's where the, that's where the team would be.
We don't, we don't have any sites in Palo Alto, no.
Right, okay. Yes, Commissioner.
This is your third installment of this contract, is that right?
It's not really, it's a third, the remaining residuals of the funding for this fiscal calendar, the first was around a heavy purchase on network equipment that was roughly a million dollars. Additional consulting services was in the second contract, and this is the third that consumes all dollars within the project for this fiscal year. So it wasn't just one contract, it's actually a series of contracts, but they've been put together as subgroups, if you will, within this calendar year, or this fiscal year.
Because I'm the new guy here, could you give me sort of an overview of the work that's been done under this budget item up to now? So the three different contracts.
Absolutely. So we said it's a multi-year effort, five years in total. The bulk of the funding was in the first year, this fiscal year, and that was to replace the backbone of the county's network infrastructure. It's ailing, it's old, it's very out of date, and so it's really a heavy modernization. The bulk of the work is at the beginning, and that's because it starts kind of in the ground, fiber in the ground, all the way up into what we call backbones between campuses, and then on the campuses themselves, going through and re-architecting the network infrastructure. This helps not only to widen out the pipes and this throughput that we can actually have at these campuses, it helps us with resiliency, but also security. So there's kind of multiple reasons that brought us here to this point on this journey. The out-years, meaning as we go forward, as we're building from the ground up, we start to do more of the wireless inside of our facilities. So a lot of what we're doing is just really kind of replacing the legacy systems, again, improving security, which has been big challenges for here at the county, and really kind of trying to get it so that we have resiliency. We've had certain campuses that have clogged because of the traffic. You look at our Public Works group, where they actually have to deal with large engineering files, and as they're transporting them back and forth across the network, users will see their system slow down because the pipe itself is getting clogged up, as an example.
So do we have our own servers, and are we, are we buying new servers? Is that part of what this money is going towards?
I'm going to categorize it as saying we have multiple projects within our portfolio. One of them is on county server, it's a separate project.
Not this one.
Not this one.
Correct.
This is purely dedicated to enterprise network, connecting us not only between campuses, but with the outside world.
Okay. Good?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a lot of servers. John, you, okay, good. Take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the purchase order agreement with Presidio for four hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-one cents to purchase the Interlocal Purchasing System Cooperative Contract for Consulting Services to Implement and Configure Equipment and Maintenance Support for the county's network infrastructure.
I'll second it, but I have to confess, I couldn't even log on to this machine this morning, so I probably should be ineligible.
You can, what do you call it, abstain?
Sure.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Thanks for your work, gentlemen.
Thank you for the consideration.
I was able to sign in, so I guess I'm officially high-tech.
Well, one for two, we'll go with it.
It took me two attempts, but I got in. All right, our next item is under Public Works, consider adoption-
They love their password.
Excuse me. Did you, you want to make a comment?
No.
Okay. Under Public Works, adoption of administration ordinance granting zone change comprehensive plan amendment ZCCP case eighteen dash zero-zero-three Perez. Joe, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item is before you today, it's an application to change the zone from acreage residential to community commercial, and change the comprehensive plan designation from rural residential to commercial on a three-quarter acre parcel of land located at ninety-one sixty Portland Road Northeast in Brooks. The hearings officer held a public hearing on September twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, and on December thirteenth issued a recommendation that the board approve the request. The board held a public hearing on January twenty-third. After considering all the information evidence in the record, the board approved the request subject to conditions. The conditions, if you remember, required that permits be obtained, that code standards regarding setbacks, signs, landscaping, required furniture improvements, a small right-of-way dedication at a corner, and proportionally share contribution to the future ramp improvements along I five at the interchange, at the Brooks interchange. The ordinance and findings have been prepared. Notice of, notice of adoption was given on February sixth. The ordinance is now set for formal adoption. You have the option of adopting the ordinance as written, direct staff to repair or modify the ordinance, or choose not to adopt the ordinance at this time. Staff recommends you adopt the ordinance as written, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Joe. I just know I remember this one, and the, the conditions were saying, okay, they accepted them, it seemed like a lot, especially when it comes to ODOT and paying for portion of the interchange, so we don't have further discussion. Any questions? We'll take a motion.
If there are any questions, Chair Cameron, I make a motion to accept, accept the recommendation to adopt the ordinance as written.
I second the motion.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Next item under Public Works, consider approval of an order initiating consideration of amendments to the city of Jervis Urban Growth Boundary, calling up the land use application LA nineteen dash zero-zero-one for jurisdictional, original jurisdiction, and scheduling a public hearing for March, it says twentieth, were we changing that date?
No.
Oh, number four. For, for March twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, and Brandon, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, representing the staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. The request to amend the city of Jervis Urban Growth is for the county to concur in amendment to the city of Jervis Urban Growth Boundary for zero point five-three acres, which once annexed would permit an additional two or three homes on the property. Uniquely, this request is from an individual property owner. Usually, the county coordinates with the city on this. We're still coordinating, but the request is from a property owner, and therefore, this request has a quasi-judicial land use component, as well as legislative, and that's why the board still has to initiate the amendments. Planning will provide notice of the proposal as both quasi-judicial and legislative to ensure that the notice is completely adequate. The property owner made the, a similar application to the city of Jervis last year, and the city approved the request on July fifth. Now the property owner has made an application to the county to concur in the amendment. In order to expedite the county process, planning recommends the board approve an order initiating consideration of the amendments, calling up the land use request, and scheduling the hearing on the matter for March twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. When the city held their hearing back in July, June, July, I believe there was no testimony from the public on this, the nature of the land, it kind of appears it's already part of the city, because it's part of the grid network pretty strongly already, and maybe people don't even suspect it's not part of the city. So this will give a chance to kind of, to consider bringing that back into the grid network and allowing it to be developable for two or three homes. So with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Brandon.
Just a comment, this was the, the, you brought to us a management update, and I thought it was part of the city when I looked at the map.
Yes, yes, I brought it, a management update.
Okay, yeah, so it's, I'm sort of surprised it's not already part of the urban growth boundary, frankly.
The applicant's representative has some explanation on the history of why that wasn't involved, and so you can ask, and he may bring that up at the hearing, just explain why it was left out. It's been out of the UGV for a very long time, thirty-plus years, if not since it was established.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve an order initiating consideration of amendments to the city of Jervis Urban Growth Boundary, calling up the land use application LA nineteen dash zero-zero-one for original jurisdiction, and scheduling a public hearing for March twentieth, two thousand and nineteen.
I'll second. Okay, just to clarify, we're okay on March twentieth on this particular action item? Okay, good.
Chair Cameron, I'm sorry, on-
You're speaking in the microphone.
On Wednesday, May twentieth, or March twentieth, there will be a shortened board session due to, uh, maybe some Whitburn. So there's a, uh, no public hearings for that day.
Well, this is being scheduled for a public hearing on March twentieth.
Right, and it means being-
This will be two. Both of them?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
March twentieth is a shortened board session.
Turn the motion.
Can create timing problems?
I am thinking, for one, I have the file. No, that'll, that'll be acceptable.
I don't have anything in Whitburn on my schedule. What's on the schedule for Whitburn on the twenty-seventh?
Twenty, twentieth.
Oh, the twentieth.
Brandon, I'm interrupting here, but I can't believe that a public hearing on this subject would take any time at all.
I, because at the city level, they had no public testimony on this, and I suspect there would be very, there would be nothing.
We could, we could, we could, we could get it done on the twentieth, and as long as we're doing one on the twentieth, we can move the other one to the twenty-seventh. So let's keep the motion as it is.
Just to point out, if something happened where there was a lot of testimony, the board could continue the hearing and into, you know, the next week or into April, and finish the hearing then, too, if something did come up.
Okay. All right, Brendan, you got that? So we're going to keep the motion as stated, and we have a second on that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, good. Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
Next action item under Public Works, still, consider adoption of a resolution to initiate proceedings to vacate the north end of Phipps Lane Northeast Salem, and schedule a public hearing for March twenty-seventh. I believe we want to change this one to the twenty-seventh.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. It's noted on the agenda as the twentieth, so we are going to change this one to the twenty-seventh.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Welcome.
Thank you. For the record, Kent Edman, County Surveyor. Before you this morning is a resolution to initiate the proceeding to vacate a portion of a public right-of-way, that being the dead-end portion of Phipps Lane Northeast located north of Glendale Avenue Northeast, as shown on the included maps and photos. Also included is a call history from the Marion County Sheriff's Office. As you are well aware, through the Commissioners and Sheriff's Office, a number of citizen complaints have been received about the problematic activities occurring within the dead-end portion of Phipps Lane Northeast. This can be seen in the included call history from the Sheriff's Office. Public Works staff, the abiding landowners, and the Deputy County Sheriff met on January twenty-third at forty-one thirty-two Devonshire Avenue, which is the courthouse, the health club, to discuss the issues and consider ways to reduce or eliminate the various activities. It was agreed that vacating the dead-end portion of Phipps Lane Northeast was the first step. I now ask that the Board of Commissioners consider adopting the resolution to initiate the proceedings to vacate the dead-end portion of Phipps Lane Northeast.
Questions? I know we've talked about this. Sam?
Well, we have talked about it. The only thing I'm thinking, and I just, I want to, if you could, review just the notification things, I'm just looking, the number of people here, I, I don't want to hear later on people who are surprised and didn't have an opportunity. So how will word get out on this hearing, what's, and can we do anything, maybe extra, make sure a news release, et cetera? So, so if there are people impacted by this, I want to know about it.
Yes. So there are two types of ways to initiate the proceedings to vacate public right-of-way. One is by petition. This one is being county-initiated because of the complaints that the county is receiving. So if you adopt the resolution to initiate the proceedings, we will send out the proper notices to the abiding landowners, letters to the abiding landowners, and we will post onsite and in the paper twice, I believe, and this is over a thirty-day period.
Because just abiding property owners only, it looks like two, you could go four people.
Correct.
I can see there's hundreds of lots that may or may not have interest, and we need to know that.
So that's up for consideration, so we can send letters to people the whole length of Glendale Avenue.
That's probably a good idea.
If the board would consider it.
That was, yeah, that was my thought.
That notifies them all, Sam, or at least on Glendale.
Yeah, probably, and they're the ones most likely affected.
Right. So in addition, I know we've been working on this for over a year. I was out there a year ago with the sheriff and Alan Haley and, and John Miller, and in addition to what you've discussed, the sheriff worked with the Trans, Salem Kaiser Transportation, so they're involved with this and notifying, so the kids, the buses will be in a different place to make sure the kids are picked up safely. So all that's been considered, and I think notifying everybody on Glendale Avenue, because that's, if they were, if anybody on that street was using it, that would be the concern, probably, because they could cut through there at some point in time. But the, the issue was, is this is, nobody can see that, that's, that's watching, but there's a parking lot in there for the, for the courthouse, and the courthouse had literally put a fence up so that you would have to go up and around to get to the courthouse, and they were cutting through their fence, too. So it, it's really, it's not a really good access, and I think people were coming this way through there. The only other place that, Sam, that I would, Commissioner, that I would consider would probably be, if we wanted to notify, there's some apartments back in here, but-
They shouldn't typically be needing to go to that neighborhood.
Right, right, exactly. So I think if we notified Glendale Avenue, good.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
All right. We do that, Kent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I just have a procedural observation. Under the statute, it directs when vacation proceedings have been initiated-
Your microphone on.
Oh, yes. When vacation proceedings have been initiated through the resolution process, the board will direct the county road official to prepare a report, and the resolution says that. But then the statute goes on to say, upon receipt of the report, a county governing body shall establish a time and a place for hearing. So the statute indicates that the hearing shouldn't be set until you receive this report. And so, um-
Is an oral report sufficient, or does it have to be written?
It's, it's upon receipt, it says, it's further resolved, the Director of the Department of Public Works is directed to prepare and file with the board a written report.
Oh.
So that's in the resolution, so unless this report is received before the twenty-seventh, I'm not sure that we could set this hearing today.
We were aware of that.
Okay.
So there's a report coming.
We are, but others, considering the time that's gone on, and the people that are involved in all of this now are new to the process, we were just trying to expedite it as much as we could. So I've ordered the locates for the utilities, so that's under, in progress. So as soon as we confirm that, I've talked with the city of Salem personally, they have no infrastructure in the portion of the right-of-way, so we're just confirming with the other utilities that there's nothing in there. So that was the attempt, to just get this on the agenda for the public hearing.
So I think council's concern is there are written reports that's coming-
Yes.
-before the twenty-seventh.
Yes, there will be, as soon as the-
Is that what your concern is, Jane?
Yeah, I mean, technically, the statute requires that a hearing not be set until the board receives, until this report is filed. So I guess if, if we can say that this, I mean, it doesn't exactly comply with the statute, but if you can say that this report is coming, and it, it will be on receipt by the time they, on the hearing, but again, the typical process is you receive it, and then it gets scheduled.
Well, we've gotten a lot of reports from them.
Yeah, I know, but this is a particular report regarding-
Is it defined in statute?
It is, it has to, they have to say that it's in the public interest to vacate the road. There has to be a finding in the report.
Okay, so, could you, could you use this as a report right here? The issue in the background description that came from Public Works, signed by, signed by Brian May, or Brian Nicholas?
Well, the, the only issue with that is that the resolution that you would be adopting today is that it says that the Director of Department of Public Works is directed to prepare and file with the board a written report, and that's indicating something that comes in the future, describing the uses of the portion of Phipps Lane proposed to be vacated, and an assessment of whether the vacation would be in the public interest.
So this is saying we're initiating the process?
Right.
The resolution, does it say that we're setting a date?
It does not.
It does not say we're setting a date.
Because under the statute, you set the date after you get the report.
Okay, but we can, we can adopt this resolution.
Yes, the resolution is absolutely appropriate.
It's fine, okay. So let's adopt the resolution, and then we can-
Set a date later.
They can go back and write a report today, and then we can set a date next week.
And I don't think you need it, I don't think it needs to be an action item for, to set a date. I think you could set it.
Right, because the report's done, it just needs to be a formal, I mean, I, I mean, I'm not going to be legal counsel, but I'm looking at this, and the issues in the background right here, and why it needs to be abandoned, is right here in our, in our agenda review form.
Okay.
If you read, have a request the Board of Commissioners consider adopting an attached resolution, you go on and fill, it tells the history, and it tells what the condition is, and, so putting that in an official report, is that what you're asking for, Jane?
And a finding that there's a, vacation is in the public interest.
But the motion would just be to adopt the resolution? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, just basically cut out the last-
Phrase there.
Yeah.
Got it.
So-
I know, I'm just saying, nothing's ever simple, but Chair Cameron, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution initiating proceedings to vacate the north end of Phipps Lane Northeast in Salem.
I second the motion.
All right, motion and second, and just for discussion, we will schedule, next, or after we get a report back from Public Works Director, then we can schedule a public hearing date, and we're going to try to do that for March twenty-seventh.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Thanks, Kent.
Thank you.
We've been trying to make it easy. Thank you.
Yes.
Just got to do it right, though, right?
Before we do.
That's my middle name, do it right.
Do it right, there you go.
John, don't laugh at me. Okay, I think we're done with our business. Commissioner, you want to read the calendar for where we're going to be?
Mr. Chair, today, we are in board session, the Senator hearing room. At noon today, February thirteenth, we will be at the Sedcor Monthly Business Lunch, located at Broadway Commons, thirteen-hundred Broadway Street Northeast in Salem. This afternoon, on February thirteenth, at three o'clock in the afternoon, we will be at the Marion County Extension and Four-H Service District meeting in the Silverton Conference Room of this building, on the fifth floor of this building. Tomorrow, February fourteenth, at seven-thirty a.m., we will be at a Kaiser Marion County meeting, located at Sherry's Restaurant, four-nine-nine-eight River Road North in Kaiser. Tomorrow, February fourteenth, at nine in the morning, we will have Management Update, located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On February fourteenth, tomorrow, at eleven in the morning, we will have executive session for MCL EA bargaining pursuant to ORS one-nine-two-point-six-six-zero-two-D, located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On February eighteenth, at eight in the morning, we will be closed in observance of President's Day. On February nineteenth, at eight-thirty in the morning, we will have Calendar Review, located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On February nineteenth, at ten in the morning, we will have an Econ Northwest Report on the economic importance of water in the North Santiam. That's going to be located at the Willamette and Santiam Conference Rooms at five-one-five-five Silverton Road Northeast in Salem. On February nineteenth, at two in the afternoon, we'll have a Budget Committee Hearing, located in the Senator hearing room, this room, in this building. On February nineteenth, at five-thirty in the evening, there will be a Salem Police Foundation Technology Preview, located at the Salem Convention Center, two-hundred Commercial Street Southeast in Salem. On Wednesday, February twentieth, at seven-thirty in the morning, we will have the Sedcor Ag Breakfast, located in the Mount Angel Fest Hall at five-hundred Wilco Highway Northeast in Mount Angel. On February twentieth, at nine in the morning, we'll have board session, located in this room, in this building. On February twentieth, at eleven a.m., we will have a Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officer Meeting, located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On February twentieth, at twelve-thirty in the afternoon, we will have a Job Council Meeting at the Willamette Workforce Partnership Boardroom, six-twenty-six High Street Northeast in Salem. On February twentieth, at three-thirty in the afternoon, we'll have a Community Leaders' Roundtable with Congressman Kurt Schrader, located in this room, in this building. On February twentieth, at six in the evening, the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments Annual Meeting and Dinner, which will be located at Kaiser Community Center, nine-thirty, Shamala Road Northeast in Kaiser.
Busy week. Hopefully, we won't have Snowmageddon, or whatever they have in Seattle.
I was let down. I was hoping for a little bit of snow.
I think we'll get some, not, maybe not down here, but-
I want everybody to be safe, of course.
You can look at my camera- You can look at my cameras up in Detroit, and.
You got some snow.
There's some snow, yeah, just probably that much on the deck.
My little girls wanted to go out and play in it.
Kids are disappointed.
I was hoping to build a snowman.
So, uh, anything you want to talk about, Commissioner? I know, okay, here we go.
Well, you know, I was thinking I probably shouldn't. It's kind of water under no bridge. But so disappointing, so wrong. Catastrophic for the future. This, that was the worst thing I've ever seen. Kind of knew it was coming, but I, I'll just, I want to go on record that, that decision unforgivable, and that's how I'll take it.
And you'd really hope that folks would do the right thing, even though, like you said, we were not hopeful. With, with an issue of that magnitude, you would hope that when it came down to it, they would really understand how important that bridge is to our community.
I said it in testimony, and it's, to me, the real issue. They have a, a certain worldview and, and plan to impose that on, on the rest, and they're using those positions to do it, and again, it's just wrong. That's all I better say.
I'm sorry I wasn't there to hear your testimony. I got there, I got there late.
It was great.
I heard you had an ovation.
Yeah, it was awesome.
I mean, people were like, did they have to tell everybody they couldn't clap after you?
No, that never happens.
They said it before, and people clapped anyway, because it was so good.
Yeah, so, yeah, well, it is, it's, our kids, well, you're young. The millennials, you know, they're the ones that would see the bridge. You and I probably wouldn't even see the bridge be built, but just the process to continue on stopped. And how much money? Eight million dollars?
To me, the biggest thing was, I said generational, I don't know if that's a good, but, but truly, I just cannot imagine in twenty years to start talking about it again, and by then it's far too late, and who knows what catastrophe, or even routine items shuts them down, what we have today, leaving no options. There was one motion to come up with something tipper, and I'm trying to think what that is. They want to discuss that in case of an emergency, so a pontoon bridge, that'll, that'll handle a lot of trucks.
No, they were talking, they were, they, they, they talked about the railroad bridge. I was listening after they voted down the, um, uh, Counselor, uh, Lewis's motion, then they made a motion to, you know, send a letter, directing a letter, and they had these, they had these, I mean, after, what, three hours of hearings, they had already written out exactly what they were going to say.
Let's make sure we never do that. I don't want to see any pre-written opinions.
We, we listen to people, and we take their opinions, and I have always done that in my whole political history. I've always listened to people.
Prepared statements.
And, and you might make a statement after you've listened to all the evidence. They already had written statements that they read after three hours of testimony that they had written before they got there. They knew what they were doing. They didn't care about the people.
When I think of the, the years that you all spent working on it, that's the thing that's astonishing to me.
Well, he's.
Thirteen years, fifteen years, people have been working on this specific project.
I couldn't tell you right now the differences, but we had a different plan that I thought was some better. But the Salem City Council roughly two years ago rushed forward and says, we won't approve that, but we would approve this. So we looked it over, okay, it's not what we wanted, but good enough, so we made that.
It was a compromise.
That was the Salem alternative, a compromise with a city of Salem Council, and now here's the subsequent one, just says, we don't care. Terrible.
It's terrible.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, it's reverse, I want to say reverse evolution. We're back to where we were.
Yes, regression.
Twenty-five years ago in City of Salem, so.
So when are they going to get these parking garages on both ends of town, or where, where do we want it? Lancaster and Wallace Marine, where we can park and.
Walk?
Yeah, walk, or.
Ride your bike? Well, the one thing they, the one thing that they, that, in one of their written testimonies was, for emergency vehicles, they can go across the railroad.
And I'm glad, that's good.
Right? I wonder if they've done that yet, because you think, you think if you had a heart attack in West Salem, I don't think there's an ambulance in West Salem. I think there's stationed right here on Front Street that have to go across.
They do have the fire, a new fire station that should give you some access.
But if you read, you read their budget, there are seven million, you know, they started up that fire station, and now how are they going to pay for it? There's seven million upside down. And, and so if they close that fire station, but even if you have the fire station, you can't get an ambulance at five o'clock across that bridge.
No way.
Within, you know, however many minutes. Get over there, fire guys maybe take care of you, but getting back over here to the hospital? You're, you're probably faster.
To go to Dallas.
To go to Dallas. Well, coming back, coming back at five o'clock, it wouldn't be that big a problem. It's not that busy coming over, but it's going out.
Well, the Dallas mayor was there testifying about their problems already, too, of getting people into Salem through, through that. He said with their lights, that's just exactly, he said with their lights and sirens, they can get through and get to the hospital pretty happy, but it takes them so long to get back in the evening and leaves the town unprotected, so there's, there's impacts right now, but even if this would have, if they had moved along, we have to know it's still a big process. We'd have been involved with it, trying to find the funding and, uh, and get the final design done. So it would have still taken a lot of time, but now, now it doesn't even, the clock isn't even running, so.
And it's only going to get worse. I mean, population's been growing here.
Yeah, they just ignore the population growth. How's that going to be? Because, well, their dream is that we're all walk, truly, and I'm not joking this time, walking and riding, and, and that's fine for people within, what, a half mile of the river? Those select few, yeah, they can get along just fine, but the rest of us in this region don't get along so fine.
Right, I mean, there's downtown housing that's being built, but not enough. I mean, you can't, where are you going to put?
You just don't have the land, right? I mean, the, the buildable land is in West Salem.
But it's a Salem issue, so let's not worry about it.
Okay, what else, uh, what else we have that was really interesting this week? Couple of things.
Yeah, a lot of things.
Yeah, last Thursday, what did we do Thursday or something? We were busy last week, yeah. Oh, yeah, we had our session, that's right. We're going to Sedcor today to listen about trucks. You're not going to go.
Well, I could, and the things have changed. I don't know.
Yeah, about the trucking industry. Well, it'd be interesting to see if they, because one of the testimonies about, uh, and it was Rick Deos, they're listening to his testimony Monday night, and in the trucking industry, when you have gridlock, you have, they, I mean, you think about this, they used to move, uh, you could get a truck to downtown Portland, for example, in an hour and fifteen. Now it's two hours, right? So now you've got to buy, he says, you've got to buy thirty percent more vehicles, you've got thirty percent more vehicles, plus you've got growth in the business. So you're just putting more and more pressure on the roads by not improving them and not having throughways. So, you know, we're going to have the same issue with, we're talking about our, um, environmental services with garbage and trucks and all that stuff, so. Anyways. Make, wave the magic wand. Ready to adjourn?
I do adjourn.
All right, we're going to adjourn.